All right, we'll call this meeting of order. Commissioner Flores, you want to lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Cameron Karazalas.
Present.
Vice Chair Aaron Todd.
Present.
Commissioner Ashley Connolly.
Present.
Commissioner Derek Farage. Commissioner Alex Flores.
Present.
Thank you. We'll go to item four consent calendar approving of minutes from our July sixteenth, twenty twenty five regular planning commission meeting. Do we have any comments or corrections on that? Have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Pass is five zero. All right, take us to item five oral communication. This opportunity for citizens to present or comment on non-related agenda items. We do not have any speakers today. So we'll move into item six, public hearing, six A, continued public hearing, consideration of resolution recommending zoning ordinance amendment twenty five dash zero one, ordinance twenty five dash nine eight one, updating the Fillmore Municipal Code to comply with state laws regarding accessory dwelling units and findings of exemption from CEQA.
Thank you. Good evening Chair and Planning Commission. As mentioned, this is accessory dwelling unit ordinance, text amendment number twenty five zero one, and it's ordinance twenty five dash nine eight four. This was brought to you back in July. It was July sixteen and we went through the ordinance, went through the changes, and there were a significant amount of comments that were made by the planning commission. In particular, Commissioner Connolly had submitted written comments, and so at that time we decided to, the commission decided to continue the hearing until August twentieth, which was the regular commission meeting, and then that was pushed to this special meeting here on the twenty seventh. The, the comments that were provided by the planning commission have all been addressed in writing, and those were provided to you previously, and they're also at your desk here at the D I S. So feel free to, to read through those or ask any additional questions if you have them. So I'll just go back through, since this is to, again, to recommend adoption of the ordinance. The background is the Fillmore Municipal Code had previously been adopted to include accessory dwelling units back in July of twenty twenty, and state laws have subsequently changed, and the ordinances are required to be updated so that they're consistent with the latest state laws. That's what this is. It's an update per state law. So ordinance twenty five nine eight four makes specific updates to the municipal code in that regard, and they will become effective immediately. Well, they'll become effective after the city council adopts it. A summary of the changes that are in the code include providing references to the latest California code sections that apply. It clarifies the maximum size for an attached A D U under subsection three D. It adds a section related to non-conforming conditions for health and safety considerations. It adds background, it adds requiring utility undergrounding that mainly affects the Edison power lines. It specifies height allowances at increased permitted heights. It eliminates the requirement for owner occupancy of either a primary home or an A D U. That does still apply to junior A D Us, by the way. It adds clarifications regarding junior A D Us to delete the expansion of one hundred and fifty feet, as that only applies to A D Us and provisions for separate entrances. It clarifies a requirement for owner occupancy of either the primary residence or a junior A D U. It revises subsection four H to provide for the same height restrictions for J A D Us as for A D Us, and it clarifies providing that expansion of J A D Us is limited to ingress and egress. It clarifies that existing multifamily developments can add detached A D Us up to the number of those existing units on that site, up to eight units. It provides that construction of an A D U shall not require fire sprinklers be installed in an existing single-family dwelling. It revises the definitions of accessory dwelling unit tandem parking and adds a definition for what's considered livable space. And then, under subsection ninety six ten A, it was amended to update the definition of A D U as well. And updating the A D U ordinance is given a special exemption under CEQA, so there was no CEQA review required for this. And again, these, this ordinance would allow for a construction of accessory dwelling units in residential zones consistent with state laws. If it was as a matter of, of physical impact of the project, it still would be insignificant. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt resolution twenty five one zero five nine recommending city council approval of the zoning ordinance amendment to update the city's zoning ordinance to comply with state laws regarding accessory dwelling units and a finding of exemption from CEQA. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just want to clarify, we didn't have the responses until just right now, right?
They were sent earlier this afternoon, and then the hard, they were emailed earlier this afternoon, and then a hard copy was provided. At your desk there, but yeah, it is a little bit of a short time period for review of those, unfortunately.
And yeah, I didn't receive those via email, so I guess I'm just seeing these now.
I had a, you know, a few just clarifying questions.
Sure.
Just to, to make sure that, so one, section three dash, or section three Q regarding the prohibiting or due to sewer, water and sewer services. We've put within the North Fillmore specific plan that we're not going to be allowing A D Us, detached A D Us. Because of water constraints and sewer capacity. But what about, I mean, what is different from that plan compared to having somebody in the bridges put one in? You're still putting the same number of, you know, extra charge on sewer system.
Yeah. Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. I just want to clarify, it's not the North Fillmore specific plan area. It's, it's the North Fillmore area. It's a, it's a wider boundary that affects not just the new development up there, but it's the pre-existing development.
Anything above?
Yeah, coming, coming to, yes.
Yes.
Think about Old Telegraph and west of A Street.
Okay.
So some of those older neighborhoods as well. That, that is a restriction because of the existing pipeline in that area. So there's a trunk pipe, sewer pipeline that comes down B Street and C Street, and it's those lines that are impacted. They're over capacity or at a, at a capacity such that we don't want to add new load there until we fully understand what more it can take and what improvements may be required to accept new load in that particular pipeline. So the area down in the bridges doesn't have that same constraint. Those pipes are more, are more recently installed and considered for the capacity of those homes in that area, but adding new load up into the north area is, as you, as you kind of bring more load in, the down trunk line becomes more impacted. However, the first developer in up there is Williams Homes is developing what's called the Creekside Residential Development, so they were subject to the same constraint. However, that developer is correcting the capacity issue. So they are currently, I think they're starting construction any day now. It's all been approved for them to go in and improve the trunk line in B Street. Yeah.
So in the future, we could come back with an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for them, once full sewer study has been done.
Yeah.
It could take additional load.
Yeah. Once those actual improvements are done and it's confirmed, yes, it can, it can accept more load, then we would, we would relieve the area of that restriction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Moving on, three, three R.
Sure.
The ordinance requiring deed restrictions for A D Us permitted, you know, owner occupied requirement and everything. Do we think that that's going to be an administrative burden on planning, code enforcement, or anything that, you know, trying to verify those and trying to verify that it keeps to that?
Yeah, it, it is required to have a deed restriction, and we, we issue that form and it gets recorded on title. It, we don't, we don't go about policing it, but any new owners would, would be notified once they, once they obtain title to the project that there, that that requirement exists.
It's part of the grant.
It was just as part of, yes. And so it's on the deed, but do we go knock on doors and, and request papers? No.
So there was the requirement of no less than thirty day occupancy.
Correct.
And that would be through like the code enforcement process if somebody has a complaint of, hey, they just constant people going in and out. They're using it as a Airbnb type of deal.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah, our code enforcement is predominantly complaint driven, and so we would rely on, on the neighbors out there. If they, yeah, if they see turnover or they see, it's kind of acting like a hotel kind of thing, then they would notify us. Our code enforcement would go out and monitor, verify whether a violation does or does not exist, and then we would pursue enforcement action at that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Moving into the fiscal issues that kind of come up with A D Us, since there's, state law says anything under the seven hundred and fifty, no impact fees.
Yeah.
But there's still planning and permitting fees that are required that are still cost recovery for the city, correct?
They still have to pay building permit fee. You know, it's pretty nominal. It's just basically a plan check and a fee for that, that permit, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't get into, into the realm of impact fees.
So the administrative, ministerial reviews and all of that were still cost recovery from all the permits to a point, I mean?
Very marginal, yeah. Yeah, they're very low cost permit itself, in and of itself. It's an administrative fee, which is about three hundred dollars, I believe, and then, then the building permit fees, which I think calculate out to another few hundred dollars, usually less than a thousand.
And then they're required, if they do rent it out long-term, year leases to have a business license with the city as a business of renting.
I, I don't think they need to get a business license to rent it as a residential unit, no.
Even if that's the business that they have of renting their property?
Yeah, I don't, no, I don't need, that requires a business license to rent out a portion of your residential property. It's not, it's not considered a business. Yeah.
So kind of outside and if, kind of going into that, if I buy a secondary home to rent that out.
Yeah.
I wouldn't need a business license for that?
You don't need a business license for something like that, no. It's a, it's just a dwelling unit. Yeah, but it's not considered a business for commercial purposes. Yeah.
That's all my clarifying questions. Thank you.
Great.
I have a, a couple. The first one, when it, on five V, it talks about the A D U shall not require the fire sprinklers. I, I read it where it states that if the residence doesn't currently have them installed, it's not going to be a requirement to install them in here.
That's right.
Is there any secondary type of fire suppressant plan that could be implemented in this to help mitigate something starting when no one's there? Like are, I, I don't read in here anything about smoke detectors or anything like that being fire alarm to notify either the resident something's going on or, at least until first responders can get there?
Yeah, you know, because this is the, this is the planning municipal code side of things. This is, this is your, this establishes your, your right to, to build a unit there. So this is considered the planning, what you call the entitlement approval, and then what you're referring to is the building code. So when they come in with construction level drawings, they have to comply with the building code, which incorporates the fire code, and under the fire code, you have certain requirements to have smoke detectors throughout, and then there is an alarm system that's installed as well. But the, the fire sprinkler, the, the question about the fire sprinklers is because when you, when you have a, a unit or a structure on site that has sprinklers and another structure that doesn't have the sprinklers, it tends to, as I understand, exacerbate the proliferation of the fire on the non-sprinkled structure. So the fire department doesn't want one building sprinkled and one not.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, thank you for that. And then, I also written here, I believe it's like five eight, where it talks about A D Us or junior A D Us not being in high fire zones.
Yeah.
How often are the fire zone maps reviewed and updated?
Very infrequently. The, we just adopted the latest one. It's called the Very High Fire Hazard Zone. It was, it was put together by the state of California, and we adopted it locally. That was just this year. And the previous one, I believe, was two thousand and seven.
Okay, the reason I ask is if a location is in a, or is not in a high fire zone.
Yeah.
Or even vice versa, and an A D U is approved, and then it becomes a high fire, is there a plan or something in place that would trigger like an additional review after completion?
No. Usually when you commit for, for a, a project, any project, you're subject to the laws that are in effect at that time. So if something were legally established prior to the law coming into effect, it's considered legal, non-conforming. So we recognize that, hey, it doesn't conform to, to current requirements, but it's still legal because of the time in which it was developed or permitted, I should say. But we, we will, if we come across those as existing, we always double check to make sure that they got the appropriate permits for the time in which it was built. And there's records on that.
Okay, so what, what, because obviously we live in a high fire zone, is it feasible or cost effective to have either the city or partner with Ventura County to review areas before, you know, this almost twenty-year gap in maps come out to make sure that if that is being processed or being built, that it's safe?
Well, we, we, all the structures are reviewed for safety under the, the conditions that occur at the time. There's nothing that triggers a, an interim review of the fire hazard zone maps locally, because it's handled more at the state level, and it's based on a lot of different environmental factors. There's a lot of different fires science that goes into creating those maps. It's based on patterns of fires over time, shifts in winds, temperatures and things like that. So it's, it's not something that's readily updated, as I understand it.
I, I guess my question is, is, is the city or would the city be open to partnering possibly like with Ventura County, for example, and or Cal Fire to ensure like, or to say, hey, not every part of California is going to be building in certain areas. But would it be more effective for the city to review something like that with those agencies to ensure like, hey, in five years, we're going to be possibly expanding into this area? We want to make sure that there's, could we get something at least updated for this specific area? It doesn't have to be a whole new map, but just something to make sure that, hey, if, if building is going to occur in this area, and then ten years of fire comes through, but we're still working on a ten-year-old map?
Okay, so if us, if one individual project comes in, review that particular area with the state to see if they might reconsider whether it should be in the fire hazard zone or not?
Correct, just something to, to allow for the, the safety of it. I mean, with everything that's going on around in Ventura County and whatnot, I mean, it's, it, it should be reviewed.
Are, are there significant, kind of the, to this question, are there significant building code enhancements in these higher fire zones, or are they?
Yeah, there, there's, the new fire codes coming out now, which is going to be based on the, the new fire hazard zone maps that were adopted this year. So the twenty, is it the twenty twenty-four update, twenty twenty-five? Twenty twenty-five update is in process now, will be delivered for approval in January of twenty-six or December of twenty-five. And there, there are updates happening to that code as we speak. It has certain requirements for materials that can be used on the homes if they're in the high fire hazard zone, a five-foot clearance zone between the structure and the area around it, so nothing flammable within five feet of the structure. And, and that would limit like having vinyl fencing and things like that that come up to the structure.
I think to be a little more specific, the North Fillmore specific plan was adopted how many years ago, and we're coming into phases now where it could begin, but if that's off an older map, is it difficult to review it before or anything else?
It's being reviewed under the current map, and the developer there has prepared construction drawings to comply with the building code to meet those types of fire standards that are required under the new code.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're covered in every aspect of that, because a lot of people are saying we want to consider Fillmore home, but I just want to make sure that we're not going off of a, a, a much older fire hazard map.
No, we are, we're using the latest fire hazard map, and it's called the Very High Fire Hazard Zone Map, and that was adopted this year, and that provides the basis for what we consider high fire hazard zone. And every project that comes in gets reviewed for fire safety. So we sit with the fire chief and go over it in great detail, and the fire chief provides comments or corrections on every development project, considering whether it's a high fire hazard zone or not. So he reviews it on a very project-specific site-by-site basis. So if it's in a high fire hazard zone, he's going to automatically know that additional requirements will be needed, and he'll note those on every plan check. And then those get implemented by the, the developer.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's, but design, like materials and everything that hasn't necessarily been updated until December, January, you know, coming up, that I think that's?
I think the building code does have, California building code does have some high fire severity building requirements.
It, it has things in there currently.
At the state level, but not at the city level?
Which everyone has to follow.
We, we adopt the same building code. So it's the state building code, but we adopt that as our own with some other minor nuances that, that are localized, but in turn, but as far as that goes, it's the latest state code.
We would still?
Yeah, that we adopt. And when the fire chief sees a new project come in, a new development come in, he's also looking for any state-of-the-art knowledge on what, what should be required. If it's not in the building code right now, he's in tune with the county fire and state fire, and, and they, they stay up to date on what's the latest considerate, the latest requirement that may be needed, because he has the authority to go beyond the fire code based on local knowledge. And so, and so it's legal for us to not just require just the building code, but local specific knowledge about the fire hazard, and then we mitigate it through plan check comments. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I was going to say that I've seen some jurisdictions, they'll have like a details sheet that you have to put in your drawing set, and it's like, you know, how you kind of encase the overhangs or undersides of decks and stuff like that, and like, you know, Montecito or whatever, they have that. You just put it in your drawing set. I mean, obviously, most architects would want to do their own detailing, but it's like a guideline. But I don't know if we have that here in Fillmore, but we could.
Yeah, we don't have a specific sheet yet, but that's something we can work with the fire department to put together. But yeah, the Creekside is really the first major project in. There's some other ones as well, but the fire chief is making specific requirements, such as boxed eaves would be one example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to ask, one of my questions here had to do with the fire hydrants, and that was something I was wondering about, if the fire chief could impose that as a restriction or as a, basically the, the person, the applicant would have to install a fire hydrant if there's insufficient water supply to the structure before they can have an A D U there? Because I know some of the areas, I mean, they probably haven't been, they're older, they don't have like the same assumption of what the fire, you know.
Yeah.
Criteria is.
Yeah, I, I, I believe the fire department has a schedule. They periodically go around town and test pressure of hydrants to make sure they're still operating. And then there's a certain distance requirement you have to have for hydrants throughout a neighborhood. And most all the A D Us are occurring in pre-existing neighborhoods that have been pre-planned with fire hydrants. And so the, the presumption is that the fire department, through their normal course of business, has been checking those hydrants all along to make sure that they maintain the same pressure and residual pressures and things like that for fire flow. If we have a, an A D U that the fire chief recognizes is in an area that maybe hasn't been tested, or he wants to check, double-check the distance, then those will be comments that he'll make on the plan, and then the applicant will address where the fire hydrant is, and they'll update a fire flow test.
Okay, yeah, because I was mostly talking about the distance, because I think probably the layout of the fire hydrants, you know, in the older parts of town, they are maybe insufficient distant.
That's a good, that's a good comment, and it may be worth, you know, the fire department may be looking at, you know, distribution of fire hydrants overall. They may be something they're already doing. I don't want to speak for the fire chief, but it's definitely, I'm noting this comment to, to ask the fire chief a little bit more about that. As time moves on, is there any other considerations for adding new hydrants to cover a certain, you know, radius? And I can report back, yeah, on that.
Because I know it also impacts like insurability.
Sure.
So, I mean, I just recently had to do this. They asked me how far away is the hydrant?
Right.
So, you know.
That's always a question.
Yeah.
On every one of our projects is, is, you know, how far away is the nearest hydrant? Yeah. You, you see that a lot with the commercial. They're, they're installing new hydrants, like Sonics installing a new hydrant.
Right.
The Red Engine Brewery, they're not had to stall a, a new hydrant. So it's pretty common that we're getting new hydrants in and around. But I'll ask the question in terms of pre-existing residential. Is there anything to, you know, re-establishing radiuses, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, would, would that be the city's responsibility, the fire or the
Yeah.
individual that's putting up the
Uh, well, the city, the fire department operates within the city. It's a city fire department. Um, so it would, it would be their, it's their purview to, to maintain the um the capacity of the hydrants and the integrity of the hydrants uh throughout the city. But when a developer comes in and there's some sort of substandard, specific substandard condition uh that exists, we, we most often put it on that applicant to upgrade, to supply their project. Yeah, i- if, if their, so if their project, if it's housing, if it's an ADU, requires new fire demand, then it's going to be on them to, to make sure that that upgrade is provided. If, if it's kind of a, what we call a kind of a cumulative scenario, where it's maybe it's pre-existing and it's affecting a whole bunch of neighborhoods. Well, then maybe they just do a fair share contribution to up- upgrading it. But that would all be determined on a case by case basis with the fire chief. This is kind of how we evaluate each and every project. Yeah.
Um, I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
In government, under the government code six, six, three, one, four, um, it talks about some objective standards. And maybe I'm misreading this, but what I'm understanding is that there could be some objective standards for landscaping, architectural review and adverse impacts to real property. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, I don't know if anybody here is interested, but I, I think if we could put some objective standards into this code regarding the landscape and architectural review, I think that might be beneficial in terms of maintaining the, the look that we want in the neighborhood, especially landscaping.
We, yeah, the objective, we have a few objective standards in there. The main one is that the ADUs, architectural materials and, and character will have to match the big primary unit
Right.
on the property. Um, and then we generally require that it be landscaped and landscaping to match pre-existing as well. Uh, but we have not established a objective standard for how the landscaping should look when you do an ADU. Um, I mean, we, we, we could, we could do that. The question would be whether they, they need to landscape, that we landscape the whole property to meet a certain standard for an ADU or if it's just a portion, we would have to think that through, but, uh, but I, I did note that as well. If we want to consider at some point um coming up with ADU specific landscape standards. But right now, we just, we, right now, we generally require that, um, you know, the, it's not, the soil is not left barren. And that they install something that, that matches pre-existing.
Okay.
And, and most all have done that. You know, they'll, they'll expand the landscaping based on what's out there. We haven't had anybody pushback on that. Uh, but, but we could definitely consider a, a certain standard.
Yeah, I mean, uh, is what you're describing codified somewhere else in the code that it says you need to match the existing landscaping? Or it's just kind of a verbal?
It's kind of the, we go off the same theme as, you know, the architectural materials and standards shall match the pre-existing.
Oh, okay.
You know, buildings, we kind of, we kind of just uh tear off that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I would advocate for putting some codified language about the landscaping, just, you know, it makes everything look nicer.
How does that apply in older homes where landscape is probably non-existent or bare minimum?
Yeah, that's the thing is it, it'd be maybe a little challenging to come up with a blanket one size fits all. Um, because like I said, if you'd have to redo landscaping on the whole property or if there's some standard for you know, coverage or uh, something that applies to just an ADU component, there's kind of a nexus issue there. If it's just an ADU.
Maybe it's a percentage of the square footage of the ADU
Something like that.
exterior has to have, you know?
And considering how much, because
Cause they're gonna cut, you know, they're gonna be excavating for footings and stuff like that. They're gonna disturb everything.
They will disturb around it.
So they need to put it back and make it look nice. So it's not just, you know.
And that's, and that's what, that's in practice, that's what happens is the, is the area that gets disturbed, gets put back and fixed. Nothing's left in a, in kind of a construction disarray situation. Uh, but it could be, it could be a little more codified. Um, it gets a little tricky. ADUs are not, do not apply toward the, you know, site coverage and things like that. So coming up with those types of standards might be a little challenging or we might get pushed back from the state that it's prohibitive. Uh, but it's something we can explore.
One limitation to, the planning commission might recall at the last meeting, I talked a bit about the six, six, three, two, three units where there's sort of a separate category of ADUs. And so that government code section that you referred to applies to the non-six, six, three, two, three. So there's sort of this whole other category where somebody could say, well, I don't want to do that. I'm just gonna do the six, six, three, two, three.
Yeah.
Unit and you can have fun with your
But the other ones come first.
Yeah. And, and oftentimes, and, and oftentimes, you know, the applicants want to do the right thing too. You know, it's their home. They want to make it beautiful. They're not always trying to sneak one by us, you know, I mean, some certain designers are, we know, but we know who they are. But, uh, but generally, they want to, generally, they want to do the right thing. And, you know, say, hey, you know, the, the landscaping is looking pretty bad. You know, prior to occupancy, uh, they'll go clean it up and then we'll issue occupancy.
Okay.
Yeah.
One, one quick point that Brian alluded to in his comments just there about the state pushing back. The ordinance will have to be submitted to HCD for review. So they're going to be providing review and comment on this at some point. And so my experience from having worked on this with other cities, there are comments that come back from HCD that cities have to either address or make findings as to why the city thinks those aren't legally required. So there is sort of a follow-up
Yeah.
process on this. Um, just to put on the planning commission's radar for that, at some point in the future, we're kind of going through a process here. Um, and so these are kind of requirements that are built in to the ordinance now, but there are issues that could come up from HCD at some point in the future that we'd have to revisit.
Like whatever we're saying is too restrictive or something and then they're, they want us to cut it out.
That, that's sort of how the HCD comments have worked. They would say, well, this is inconsistent with state law or this is inconsistent with our interpretation of state law. And they're willing to have conversations with city staff and kind of explain their position. So sometimes i- in my experience working with this with other cities, there's a bit of back and forth. And sometimes they have higher priorities than others. And a lot of times reviewing the comments, it'll be things that we can kind of agree, okay, well, the state law maybe does prohibit us, we'll agree to make that change. And then there's other things that are a little bit murkier in the state law language and there's some conversation about how to address that. And there's a specific procedure in the government code that's laid out where the city can either make the changes that HCD provides and re-adopts those, or has to put findings into the ordinance that's adopted, explaining
Why then?
why they've not been adopted.
We, we could consider something, we could consider, you know, with, uh, the consult uh with Michael on this. If there was something that the commission might recommend that we bring with us to the city council at the next hearing, like what you're saying. You know, a simple sentence under that, that section about the, you know, matching existing architecture that, you know, construction, that the site shall not be left in, in disarray as a result of construction of the ADU. And that some form of landscaping
Yeah.
Um, landscaping could mean it, it could mean decorative stone, you know, decorative rocks around, so you're not, you know, creating a fire hazard. Or it could be just extending the pre-existing, but maybe, maybe, yeah, maybe something about disturb, any disturbances as a result of the construction shall be, you know, repaired or landscaped.
Or if they're removing landscape area to install the ADU, maybe they have to compensate.
Right. Yeah, or, or might be a little, a little prohibitive. Um.
Or identify how much they're gonna compensate or something, you know, it doesn't have to be
Like if they remove a tree, plant another tree.
Yeah, you know, something like that. Because this, if they're in the front yard too, I mean, this is like really broad, you know, you could put your ADU like in the front yard.
Yeah.
And if you have no landscaping, it's like, it just can become unattractive.
Right. True.
Um, and then I had one other question about, so are any ADUs that don't fall into category A or category B allowed? Like, let's say you want to make an ADU that's more square footage than what's currently being stated here. Or you want to build it taller than what's currently allowed. Are there, is, can that be done through discretionary review? Or it's just not allowed?
It's just not allowed.
Okay.
Yeah, you, if, if you don't meet the code, then it, it doesn't happen.
Okay.
You don't, you don't get invariances for something like that.
Okay.
Um, we, before the ADU laws came into effect, it was called a secondary dwelling unit or often referred to as a granny flat. And there were standards for that and that was all discretionary and they would come to, to you folks. Um, but now with the ADU laws come into effect, that's kind of taken over that secondary dwelling unit standard. Um, and I, and I think the ADU laws are maybe a little more permissive than the secondary dwelling units law, laws were.
Okay.
So
If someone wanted to, they could appeal that for zoning um review, right? Like come and say, okay, hey, I, I want it bigger um than what's currently allowed in. And they can come to the planning commission for requests.
They would have to request a change to the code. They would have to, they would have to request a zone, uh, a zone change. They have to change the law.
Okay.
You can't, nobody is a, nobody can make a decision that's illegal.
Right.
Not planning commission nor city council. So if you want something that's not allowed, you change the law.
So removing the discretionary um part of the ADU process now has solidified this is what an ADU is instead of a full new structure, um, you know, instead of just building a brand new home um, on the property. So at that point
Yeah.
You know, goes from ADU to an actual dwelling unit.
Well, if your, if your, if your application is for a new single family dwelling unit, that's, that's a development permit. So that is discretionary. And so that's subject to the, that would come for a review.
Okay.
But we wouldn't comment on the ADU, right?
And then, and then they could, yeah, they could include an ADU within that. And you wouldn't have a lot of, as long as it meets the ADU standards, it, it goes with the house.
Right.
But you have to get the house approved.
Right.
Because it's, it's called accessory. And so you have to have a primary in order to have an accessory, in order for that to go together. So if you have a house, you can get an accessory dwelling unit. If you have nothing, you, you get nothing unless you get a house.
Um, and is it allowable to just have an accessory structure that's not an ADU?
Yes.
And that's
Storage structures.
Like a artist studio or something like that?
Uh-huh.
And, but that's discretionary too?
Uh, those are generally ministerial.
Oh, okay.
You know, if you, if you were doing a detached garage, that's an accessory structure. Uh, you know, like a little art studio, something like that, storage. Um, those can be permitted. And those are ministerially approved. So it's an administrative clearance and a building permit.
Okay.
But there are standards for those. There's height standards, there's setback standards and things like that. And those would have a, a different set of standards than ADUs.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Close, do we close the public hearing?
So this, if there's any, it's a continued public hearing, so we'd be opening it to public, if there's any public comment formally and then recognize that there's not any, then close the public hearing.
Well, there is no public here or comments, so we'll close the public hearing. Was there any um like written comments?
No, we received no written comments or phone calls.
I have one last question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Um, how many, uh, regarding the, the sewer and the water
Yeah.
Taken away the bridges in North Fillmore? Would the city implement like a, how many ADUs will be built in a certain street? Or in certain section? And then they will have to reevaluate the sewer situation and the water situation? Cause if you're saying you're overloading certain areas.
Right.
How many ADUs will be allowed to overload that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one of the things we have to manage with the sewer studies. Um, so we, we kind of ballpark, we could kind of roughly, you know, estimate, you know, um, there's, you know, a half a dozen or a dozen ADUs per year in a given neighborhood, um, and that, what that might look like over time. Uh, but, but generally, the, it's gonna have to be managed. It, it's definitely a concern that, that we have as a city and I believe every city has this concern throughout with, when the state's you know, commanding that we, we approve ADUs. It hasn't, hasn't fully played out what that's gonna do to the uh sewer and water capacity. But we are managing it. And once that line is fixed, our public works is saying there'll be capacity to add ADUs and then they'll, we'll continue to monitor it. But we, there isn't a fixed number. It's not, it's not pinned to an exact science at this point as to, you know, how many ADUs could be, could go up there. It'll, it'll, it'll kind of play out over time.
And then manufactured homes and fabricated homes, would there be, if, if the land permitted to allow one of those to come in?
Yeah.
Would they be, would they fall under the same guidelines?
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're putting in a manufactured home, it's, it's, it's the same thing as adding a home, you know, for those purposes. It has a foundation and has hook up, hooks up to the sewer and things like that. So they're not doing septic tanks.
Okay. So we'll close, officially close the public hearing. Um, do I, any discussion among the planning commissioners?
Nope, I, I would go ahead and make a motion to uh adopt the resolution twenty-five, one oh five nine um, to recommend to the city council, um, the amended ordinance.
I would, I would second your motion, but with the added landscape requirements.
Right, yep, and I, I wrote that down here. Um, to recommend to the city council with the added um statement regarding what to do with landscaping for the ADU.
Okay.
If I can have a point of clarification of that, uh, Brian, um, we can approve, recommend city council approve the ordinance with a recommended language that we have objective landscape standards. We have to stress objective.
Yes, correct.
That would be my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Pass is five zero. All right, uh, moving on to six B, public hearing, consideration of zoning ordinance text amendment twenty-five dash oh three of ZOA twenty-five dash oh three to implement twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine housing element and finding of sequel exemption.
Okay, thank you Chair. Uh, this is zoning text amendment twenty-five zero three and it's going to be ordinance twenty-five nine eight seven. This is a revision to the action items as part of the housing element that you heard just a few months ago. Um, so back in March and April, this commission received the zone text amendments and zone changes to implement the housing element, action items three one and three two. And you'll recall that included rezoning of various portions of the city, add higher density residential to meet the low income or affordability designation standards that are given to us by the state. And once your body recommended city council approval of those, those amendments, it went to city council. City council approved it. Once city council approved it, it then got submitted to the California Housing Community Development Department for review in order for them to certify our housing element finally. And un- unfortunately, the, you know, the chain of processes has always been that, you know, city council approves it and then it goes to them for a review. And if they make a change, then you got, kicks it all the way back. So, uh, it was a very minor change that they requested be made. But I'll just give you a little background first on, on what it was. Uh, that, it pertains to housing element action three two. And that was part of your decision. Uh, back then it created the uh housing overlay zone. And the housing overlay zone, you might remember, included just six parcels. Those were the pink ones on the map. Uh, it increased the density allowances. And again, it was an overlay, so it didn't change the underlying zoning. It's just an additional zoning should a developer want to pursue it. And those areas are there in, in pink.
And those areas are there in, in pink. And again, it's up off Second Street and B Street. And then there's one on Sespe, and then finally one down on C Street, south of River Street. So those were the, those are the six parcels. And you adopted this overlay zone, and it had special standards in there. HCD received the ordinance, reviewed it. And they identified a government code section 65583.2 subdivision HI that require that the overlay have a buy-right housing when a, when a development has at least 20% of the units designated as affordable. So it was, it was a minor nuance, but they do want that added in. So we met with them, went over what specifically they would like us to do. And that brought us to this language here. So in the table, you might remember, we added the HO zone there, all the way to the right. That's the new zone. And it included a P for permitted under multifamily dwell, dwellings. And the sub-note, the footnote there is that P1. And so this is the language that was added per the state. When it's in the, what's in the housing overlay zone, and if a development includes at least 20% of the units being designated for affordable uses, it's considered by right. And by right is also defined in the California code section, so we have to go by that definition of it. And then it also does not constitute a project under SEQA. So that Public Resources Code Section 21,000 is SEQA. So it doesn't mean a definition of a project either. So basically, by right is, is ministerial. It doesn't, you cannot require a conditional use permit, or development permit, or anything like that. However, if it includes a subdivision, you still have to abide by the subdivision map act. But in a project like this, you know, where you're looking at these properties I just showed you, if you're not doing a subdivision, you could do, do a large project there and have it be by right with 20% affordable units.
How long do the units need to stay affordable for?
It's 40 years? Maybe 50?
I, yeah, I was going to guess 55.
Is it 55?
But I'm not, not 100, it's.
It's not like two years on the market rate?
It's very far into the distant future, and that, that gets recorded on title.
Okay.
And, and I think there's a distinction in the number of years too, depending on whether they're for sale units or rental. But I don't recall which is, I think one's a little bit longer than the other, but I don't recall off the top of my head.
So that's the footnote that's been added, that's really all it was, it's a very minor addition, but unfortunately, it puts us all the way back through the process. And then the one other thing that, you know, in discussing it with them, our definition in the HO zone included a minimum and a maximum consistent with what this table shows, but they said, well, you know, it'd be helpful to also list the minimum there, so we went ahead and did that. Just, just to appease what they were requesting, so that was the other change that happened. So that's, that's basically the gist of it, adding that footnote and adding the minimum density. And that was that. So after this, if you, if you were to recommend city council approval, we'll take it to city council for the first reading, and then subsequently, we'll have the second reading, and that, that's when it officially is adopted after the second reading. And then it will go back to HCD for their review. And then we're, hopefully, we'll get the certification letter of our housing element. If we don't, as long as we are not having, as long as we don't have a certified housing element, we're running the risk of a developer coming in and, and, and using what they call builder's remedy, which basically means they could propose anything and everything, and have no local zoning standards applied to it. So that's why this is, we're working this way, its way through the process here diligently, and getting it back up to HCD, we've been in close contact with HCD, so that's, that brings us here tonight. And then we'll be at city council shortly after this. Our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution 25-1060, recommending city council approve zoning ordinance amendment 25-03 and finding of exemption from SEQA. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, any questions?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Were there any comments from city council regarding the housing element?
No, I don't think there were. There was a robust discussion, but there weren't changes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Their attitude is get it approved as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
All right.
Was it already, it was already P, right, under the?
Yes.
In the chart, so it didn't have discretionary at all anyway, right? It was already kind of by right?
Except that, still, when it's a P, if you're doing new construction, then it kicks it up to a development permit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So.
So that.
Yeah.
That was the nuance there, that's a great question, because that was one of the, that was one of the nuances we had to explore, is if it's a P, is that not discretionary, but because it's new construction, we had to declare, we had to go back and, and make it very explicit.
Okay.
That it's by right, as opposed to kind of triangulating through the document.
We did have the discussion when we were talking to HCD, well, we think we're, we, this process, we have to follow anyway.
Yeah.
So what, but they really wanted to see that language and to make that clarification.
Yeah, we figured it was, we figured it's kind of covered in the way you read the code, but they wanted specifically this language.
Just so it's in your, in your face.
So someone easily, yeah, it's, a developer could come in and boom, it's right there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I have another question, it's a little bit unrelated, but, so I saw that in the government code, the ADUs count towards the housing.
Yes.
So when we went through all this, was that counted? Were the, were the ADUs possible in the new developments all like included in the housing count?
Yeah, when we, when we report to HCD our housing numbers, we include the ADUs.
Even the ones that are not built yet, like the possible ADUs?
Yeah, they're categorized as entitled.
Okay.
But you don't get credit until you issue a building permit.
Oh.
But we do track the sequence, so even application, so there's like, there's a big giant Excel spreadsheet that we, that we track these in. And then so you have like application, and you have numbers of units, and then it tracks, you know, where it is in the process. So the next year, you might be at, you know, approved entitlement, and then the next year, you know, maybe you're at building permit. And only at building permit do you, do they credit against your REDA numbers.
Okay.
But they still want to see how it's tracking time-wise through the entitlement process. Yeah. And then, and all the way through to occupancy. But the, the credit happens at building permit, like I said, and we do count ADUs, they're all in there, we put every residential unit in our reporting. But we, we report the ADUs as market rate at the moment, because we don't have good data on how much they're renting for. But we are including in our ADUs now, I developed a questionnaire to, so that the ADU owners would voluntarily, hopefully, tell us what their rents are gonna be, we've only really gotten one back. So we can try, try to develop some data to see where that falls in terms of affordability, but so far, we haven't gotten any affordability credit. Plus, you would have to have it recorded on the deed as, as affordably restricted, yeah.
It would be cool if they got some kind of.
Yeah.
Incentive to make it affordable.
Yeah, I mean, just by way of having a, you know, an ADU that's, you know, one bedroom or two bedroom, and it's sharing a lot and things like that, it's of course gonna be cheaper to rent.
Right.
You know, and so maybe just even, and by market rate, by design.
It's cheap.
By design, sometimes they tend to be affordable. But, but explicitly restricted on the deed is what we would need in order to get the credit for it.
I see.
Yeah, and, and a lot of homeowners aren't gonna be able to do that.
Yeah, it makes it harder to sell their house.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions? All right, so we'll open the public hearing, and we do not have any public present, so we will close the public hearing. Any discussion, review discussion? Anyone wanna take a shot at the motion?
I'll, I'll go ahead and move, move for the commission to approve the resolution 25-1060 to recommend to the city council the zoning ordinance amendment 25-03.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Pass is five zero. All right, moves on to item seven, reports and communications, seven eight, planning commission brief reports. Any readouts or briefs from the commission?
I did receive some correspondence from some constituents, and then also talking with people out regarding the traffic study. There was yet another accident here on Central and 126. And people are concerned. I have reiterated to them that it has been approved by the city council, it's in the process of moving. But just wanted to, you know, make it public that, you know, it is a concern for people. So that we're clear to our citizens, but the city council has approved is a grant application for something called an action safety plan? And that's a grant for us to improve crosswalks and street improvements for safety purposes? That's about as far as it goes, doesn't go any further than that. Separate from that, the city managers reaching out to Caltrans, CHP, Ventura County Transportation Commission, and SCAG. Separate from what I just stated, and there's an effort there to, to put some attention to what you're describing. I don't know where it'll lead, we'll find out.
Cause at the bridge there on the 126, that's where Fillmore City takes over, or is the 126 completely Caltrans?
It's completely Caltrans.
Okay. So all safety-related things, we're going to need their backup?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So would, would it be prudent to maybe get a ad hoc committee or something with city council, with transportation commission, the, you know, potentially the board supervisors to, you know, really kind of push Caltrans to, you know, help review this?
I can represent that opinion to the city manager, so when he's starting to have this discussion, but you can do the same, you can speak to your council members and suggest that to them.
Beyond that, we should probably wrap it since it's not an agenda, I don't want to get too much into detail, especially with talking, making recommendations to.
Yeah. So yeah, that's really the only communications that I've had. All right. Move down to seven B.
I don't have anything unless you have a question for me. I do, Brian and I do a good job, I think, of sending you photographs of construction projects, because you're not on the construction sites, Brian and I are, and we take pictures, and then we give you kind of updates, and you can share those with people if you like.
Last, last meeting, you mentioned that the city hired code enforcement.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we did.
Have they started?
Yeah, they start on Tuesday.
Okay.
So we've been without a code enforcement officer for over a year. Jacob and I have been doing the code enforcement, and so we will have a company called Four Leaf, and they do start on Tuesday, and we hope that they revamp our entire system from compliant, complaints to our code, to filing system, how we process complaints. And one of their duties will to, will drive around the city, look for obvious safety issues. And I explained to the city council, they're not on a witch hunt, so if they see someone doing something, they're not necessarily gonna go after somebody, because we are complaint-driven unless it's a safety issue. The name of the company is called Four Leaf. And they have experience in some cities with enforcement of street vendors. They have a lot of experience in that. We also hired a company called Bureau Veritas to assist us in adoption of the new building code. We hope to have it adopted by December 2025. And we do have the ability to make some modifications to it, to assist in Fillmore's climate or geology or anything like that. So we're starting that process. So we will have a new building code, all buildings will have to comply with a 2025 building code. And it most likely will not be adopted or revised again for six years. There's push on the, on the state to not change it every three years.
All right. Anything else? All right, with that, we'll move on to item eight, adjournment. We'll adjourn this meeting for the next regularly planned, planning commission meeting scheduled for September 17th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the city council chambers.
Thank you.